Sound of power.
Oh, the ego kicks in there.
My only risk is hitting my own finger. That's other times a day. Okay, let me call the special council meeting to order. Press and public are duly notified. We have a form now that there are six.
And Ralph's on his way in.
Early, and Ralph is now here. So, all those expected are here. Cindy is excused and Marty is excused, so we have seven of the nine present and accountable. This meeting is called to look through the details necessary for a millage adjustment, due as a result of the reassessment. I'll ask Linda to walk us through some of the details. I'll start by saying that the county which originally had requested, almost required, that we complete this work tomorrow has fallen away from that, and so we have more time than tomorrow. So, since there's so much chatter and so much to understand of what's happening here, I think we ought to just understand it, and then we'll meet again next week, or there are, probably next week, and make a decision at that time. But, let's walk through the details and then see where the questions fall out.
Okay. I'm going to start out by doing just an overview of reassessment and what it means, and then we'll get into some of the detail of the numbers. And I was going to touch on some of the same things that the mayor did. I think the anticipated activity for tonight was that we would be setting the millage in order to turn that number into the county tomorrow as they had requested. They have now indicated that there is more time available to do that, and because it is a reassessment year, it seems important that everybody have as much time as possible to understand the data and the activities, and get any questions answered prior to making a decision regarding the adjusted millage.
Just, let me just interject. The one thing we do know is Mount Pleasant's asked for more time also.
That is correct. Mount Pleasant has-
We're not the only ones sitting here. I mean, a number of communities, at least those two we know of.
That's right. We didn't query them all, so there may be more than that, but we are aware of some others. But basically, reassessment is a process of revaluing the property within a jurisdiction to assign new values for tax purposes. And it's basically a process of truing up to actual values. South Carolina law indicates that we should do a reassessment of property every five years. The last reassessment occurred in 2005, so technically reassessment should have occurred last year, but implementation was delayed until this year. So, we're looking at reassessed values in this year, which is, this represents the five years, even though it's a little bit of a stretch in terms of timeframe. Relative to taxing authorities, the intention of reassessment is for the taxing authority not to receive a windfall in property tax revenues, and likewise, reassessment is not intended to bring the taxing authority a shortfall, but rather to make an adjustment in the millage rate that takes into account values going up or down, such that the revenues coming to the taxing authority remain flat. So you basically have a new name for the same thing. So basically, what has happened to the assessed values in the city of Isle Poms? Within the city, our values for 4% assessed properties went down 4.3%, and I'm going to call your attention to, I sent you several documents, and the second page of the group of documents has three columns on the page, and about two-thirds of the way down that page, you see real property 4%, and if you run your finger across that, it shows a decline in value of 4% assessed properties. These are the owner-occupied properties of 4.3%. On the 6% assessed properties, which would be the non-owner-occupied properties, we experienced a decline in value of .7%. So overall, on the island, values declined. Now, that doesn't mean everyone's value declined. That means some values went down, some values went up, but the net aggregate amount went down. So, because of this decrease in value, if the city were to assign the same millage rate that the city had last year to that lower value in property, and did the computation to see what that would bring in for the city, then for the budget year that we are in right now, the FY12 budget that has already been set, we would experience an almost $200,000 shortfall. Again, not intended by the law and the change in the values, any more than it would have been intended by the law if we left the millage the same rate, and that was a $200,000 windfall. So, if you try to think about it, that it could have gone either way. In fact, in the two prior reassessment occasions with the city in the last 10 years or so, in both instances with those reassessment years, values increased, and millage therefore had to be rolled back. So, this is the first time in a while that we have seen some decreases in values that necessitate the change to go the other direction in order to be flat. Our prior millage rate, just to remind everybody, was an aggregate amount of 22.2. That was 19.3 for the operating millage, and then 2.9 to service the city's debt, which, just to refresh everybody's mind, that is referendum debt. It was debt that the city entered into in order to do things that the residents told us that they wanted us to do, and to borrow money to do them. So, that 2.9 component of our 22.2 in debt service was actually something that the residents indicated that they wanted the city to do. So, we still have to service that debt with millage. When we convert the millage to an adjusted rate, which is a calculation that is prescribed in state law, then our aggregate millage goes from 22.2 to 22.9, which is a change of 19.8 from the 19.3 on operating, and to 3.1 for debt service, an aggregate increase in the millage of about 3%. So while our values have fallen a little more than that, the adjustment in the millage is about 3%. When you run the calculation to see what 22.9 produces in revenues for the city, and you bump that up against our budget, which, you know, I'll remind you of the numbers that you use in the budget in order to determine how much property tax revenue you need, it's the first line of the revenue budget that shows the operating millage, the second line that shows the debt service millage, and the third line that shows the local option sales tax. It's the addition of all three of those components to tell you how much revenue you need in order to be able to balance your budget, and to meet the expenses that are expected to need to be met in the operating budget for FY12. When we do that calculation, it produces a shortfall of $54,000 and some change. We believe that it is not necessary for the city to consider the Consumer Price Index increase that we would be allowed to take if we were to feel the need to take it in the millage increase, which is 1.64%. We think that the $54,000, based on our historic trends, we could stand that shortfall and be okay with savings that we might be able to see in other areas. So, doing a millage rate of 22.9 that generates just shy of what we expected to generate off of the 22.2 would be acceptable for the city. What this means for our taxpayers means that some taxpayers will pay slightly more than they did last year based on their new assessed value, and it means that some taxpayers will pay slightly less than they paid last year based on their new assessed value. Again, remember, some values went up, some values went down. The net amount that comes to the city is the same, and we adjust the millage accordingly for that purpose. So, if you look at the sheet that shows the examples, I'm going to skip the sheet that has all the computations on it, and just go to the example sheet. This was where we decided to look at, okay, let's look at some individual properties, representative samples throughout the island. We tried to get some front beach homes, we tried to get representative samples of 6% assessed homes, 4% assessed homes, front beach, back on the waterway side, center of the islands, wild dunes area, breach inlet area, and just ran the computations to see, A, at first we were looking for trends, but then basically we were looking at, you know, how many going up, how many going down, just off of these representative samples. And you can follow that across if you go all the way to the final column over there, where we have taken prior to assessment values, after assessment values, applied the old millage, then applied the new millage, and did the computation, and subtracted. You see swings, you know, some people pay $65 more, some 30 less, 47 more, you know, it goes, the swings are from $30 to $418 in savings. So, some might be paying 30 more, but another one might be paying $418 less. All depends on assessments going up and down, and that adjustment to the millage factor. So that kind of gives you an idea that from one property to the next, you can't really predict whether they will be saving money as a result of reassessment, or paying slightly more money as a result of reassessment, but the amount that comes to the city, irregardless of that, would be the same. The sheet that was right before the sheet that is, that has these examples on it, is the actual computation showing what is generated by the 22.9 mills. And if you go near the bottom of the page, you see an expect, a total expected property tax revenues, that's after going through the calculation with the new millage rate of 19.8 and 3.1, which gives you the 22.9. We generate $4,673,840, and right below that, you can see the reconciliation where we have pulled the numbers that is what we need to generate as per the past FY12 budget, and gets us to the deficit number of 54,352. We have available for you, if you want to go through it in the detail, all of the backup numbers that support these schedules that I provided to you in advance. And we can pull those out, we've got copies for everybody, and review those with you if that's helpful to you. It does include a schedule that shows how the law prescribes we calculate the adjusted millage. And if everyone feels like it would be helpful and important to go through those schedules, we've got them, and we're prepared to do that with you. Extra time buys us that.
Linda, I've gone through those schedules, and by the time your hair is going to hurt, it takes quite a while to move from one page to the next, to move the data back to this one and understand, because it's not just the real properties that we're dealing with here. We're dealing with watercraft, we're dealing with motor vehicles, we're dealing with motor vehicles for part of the year, and then to move to a different calculation for another part of the year.
Right.
I mean, and that's just a sampling of how your hair is going to hurt. And you need to do the before and understand what that is before you can do the after of the recalculation, so.
And it's there, so. I'd just like to point out that there is, there is no simple method to understand it.
Right.
And that's the other, you know, you might look at total numbers, but you can't really apply the totals.
Right.
Based on how it's required to be calculated, so.
An important thing to know is that the formula and how it's calculated is dictated in state law, so it's not like we have any wiggle room, oh, if we calculate it this way, we can come up with a different number, a number that we might would feel would be more advantageous to us or not. It tells you how to calculate it, and what can and cannot be included. The county does this function for us, but we don't accept the county's information at face value. We go through it ourselves and verify the numbers, and do our own calculations to check to theirs. So, what you've got before you has been doubly checked, because it's the work that the county's done, and then it's our verification of that work again. So, I feel, and that's been part of the reason why we wanted to take our time in even getting to here today, and have continued to want to be very careful and take our time with this, is because we want to make sure that it's absolutely correct when any decision is considered by city council.
I have an outstanding question. I could say it's outstanding. If you look at, if you look at your data, it says on the bottom of whatever number sheet it was, the two, the multiple columns, it says there are 589 appeals-
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
From IOP property owners currently resident at the assessor's office. While you can look above, there has been, from the assessor's office again, an estimate of the appeals, the result of those appeals. So it's just an estimate on no, well, 589 appeals out of a population of, what, do we have 4,400 properties or something like that?
Yeah, 4,400, 4,500, yeah.
That's a sizable chunk of appeals that are outstanding, and it doesn't take a math -- well, it may take a math. But, if they've estimated $61,000 on 589 appeals, that's roughly 100 bucks, an appeal impact on the calculation. Not, not very much, in my book. So my concern is that those appeals, if supported, will lower our tax base even further, and put us into more of a difficulty than we're in.
Maybe more than 54,000, even with the millage adjusted to be level.
So I don't know what timing they have on, they've had three months, well, I don't know, you can appeal your taxes anytime, whether people have waited until September to appeal, and we're now in October, but are they executing these promptly? Do we expect, I mean, are they going to be, I'm not asking you.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
My question ultimately for the assessors is, how quickly are we going to know these 589 appeals to be resolved, or is it just a matter of note? In their case, they have them resolved, they just need to notify the parties, I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't-
So that sort of stuff I need to make myself a little more comfortable before we dig a hole deeper than what we have, so. There must be other questions resident at the table here, so let's walk through.
I just, one question. The assessed value, what year are they using as the basis? Is it assessed values as of 2010, or is it?
2008.
That's what I thought. That's what, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, so people's property value today is not the property value that's being assessed.
Right.
Or valued, it's actually the 2008 property value that we're basing this on.
Right. But recognize that in 2005, they used 2003-
Right.
As the base, so they still have a five-year period, in that if, I'm not an assessor, but I imagine their argument would be, if we do everybody in the same period, then everybody's at the same, on the same plane, you know.
It's the same narrow window, but, you know, you can't, you can't assess a whole county in six months.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and so, that's why I would think that that's, but that's why I wanted to know what basis year they're using, so that people would understand that it's not today's value, but it is from the assessor's point of view, it's a 2008 value.
Couple of just interesting things to point out, since we have time to be able to dialogue. If you look at the example sheet, and you look at property D, which is a 4% property, and we're totally speculating this because we did not check it, but in talking about people who may have appealed, that's one that appears to me, looking at the value, may have been one that was appealed and resolved, because you can see the value went significantly down in that particular property, 884,000 compared to 560,000. That's, when you look at the other swings on the sheet, they are not as significant as that one is. And so my speculation is that that was an appeal that was won on whatever grounds, but I'm totally speculating. Other piece of information that just might be interesting to be aware of because of just swings, the other two reassessment years, and I think at one time or another, all of you received the historic millage schedule, might not have it in front of you now, but the reassessment years are marked on there, so you can see the change in millage, and these were years where it was necessary to roll back. And, you know, in the one case, the millage rate was 34.2, and it was adjusted to 28.3. And then, in the other case, the millage was 28.5 and adjusted to 17.9. So, the decrease that we've seen in values this time, just by my way of thinking, was different, was less than the increase in values that we saw in the years that they were increasing. It was significantly higher. So it's, to my way of things, just things are leveling out a little bit from the extremes that we have.
Well, if we hadn't done the reassessment adjustments, we'd be still at 34.2 mills.
Yeah.
Which, which-
Significant windfall.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the point, is we're not allowed windfall, but we're not necessarily told to take a burden either, so.
And other just interesting piece of information, because I think sometimes we get asked, and so it's good to have the information, I think. We did check, Salamis Island set their millage on Tuesday night, and they went from 26.2 to 27.8. And the components of that is the adjustment for the millage, the millage adjustment, they took the CPI of 1.64, and then they took an increase, they're calling increase for reserve, and I'm not sure exactly what makes up that number, whether or not they had a deficit in a prior year, and that's why they had that, or if it's for some other purpose. But, it's about a 6% swing in the millage rate over there, just kind of four-year information. I understand Mount Pleasant's values did not decrease. They have not taken their action yet, but their values did not decrease, so that means that they will likely be just considering the adjusted millage number, and then whether or not to take a CPI or not. Yes, ma'am?
Linda, I asked you to check with the county to get a detail of number of properties that have gone up, number of properties that stayed the same, and as far as the real tax dollars. Has the county provided that information to you?
No, sir, I did, as you requested.
It's been six weeks.
Yeah, I know, I have it in my file right here. And they were not hopeful and encouraging when I made the request, and so I guess, given all that they've had to deal with, with their computer problems and everything else, you know, they just haven't had time to get to it at all. But I've still got it in my file as a pending action as well.
One, do you think, they said they didn't give you no timetable, to be able to see the detail about this?
And, and you know, when we started doing the examples, it was, we had this moment of going, if we had had that already, then we might, would have been able to just look at some trends of things, but, but we didn't, so.
Now, am I right, when we did the reassessment in 2002, in 2008, that as far as the city budget, or there was no net increase or decrease to the funds coming to the city?
When you adjust the millage, whether it's to, you know, a roll-back millage or roll-forward, the intent of what you're getting with that money is for it to be flat, to generate the same amount of dollars. Now, I'd have to look at those years to know whether or not there was something else that the city happened to be doing in those years, where we increased the millage for that reason after we adjusted the millage down, because that sometimes happens.
Look at the table, answer the question in 2005, that's correct, it was just a flat.
I was going to look at mine, too.
In the prior one, earlier, we added nine firefighters.
So we would have adjusted down, and then on top of that-
Added the firefighters.
Added the expense of the firefighters, which would have been whatever millage it took to cover that expense.
See, the challenge is, there are a number of homes that are going to have their taxes go up, and there are a number of homes that are going to have their taxes go down, so the people that are, taxes go down, they're going to be happy, wow, look at this, and just like some of the examples you presented, and unfortunately, we have some people that are going to perceive this to be a tax increase, and that's a, that's a challenge.
It is.
And I think we really need the data from the county in order to understand where we're infected. Are we talking about 10% of the homes? Are we talking about 70% of the homes? I think we need that information.
I will certainly convey that.
But we may never get that. We could never provide it.
Well, we should have a tax boycott to the county until they give us the information.
But I don't think that's-
Lock your by-front beach.
All right, any other concerns, Ryan?
I'm good.
Ralph? You studied it?
Digested some more.
Doug, any? Barb? Michael?
Pig in a book.
No, I just want the faction accounting.
It's a difficult time, of course, but, you know, we're trying to stay neutral.
Exactly.
It's not a tax increase, it's a re-proportioning across the island, and the city has held, kept hold, some people pay more and some people pay less. I've not done a poll of council as to how many are paying more and how many are paying less, but it's probably 50/50, I guess, and it probably would be that across the island, so, but I don't know, I don't have any specific data.
I think it'd be helpful to know the number.
Oh, if we get the number, that'd be useful, but the result is-
It was about that with our random sampling, that, you know, when you just look at the random sampling, is up and down is, you know, about like that.
The point is, the philosophy that the state has dictated, and that we have followed, is we should not either get a windfall or be put in a burden for the fact that it's a reassessment. We could tell them, don't reassess us, and just keep trucking on and we get the same dollars, but that's not our prerogative. And if they had not used 2008, they had used something more current, it wouldn't be any different. The delta may be different, but, you know, we'd still try and be neutral.
There would still be, there would still be winners, there would still be losers.
Right.
That's right, yeah.
But the city would be getting the same amount of money.
Be great, no matter what.
I mean, we all know that the people, unfortunately, that purchased their homes in the, I'll call it the housing bubble, wherever it started, but ending in about 2008, those that purchased since the reassessment, probably, they've come down, because they paid a price that can't be realized now, and the assessor's office probably understands that and has reassessed it accordingly. But I know other properties that have gone up that haven't changed hands, and I don't know what else I should know.
I did, also just wanted to mention, they're, the county has got an excellent FAQ regarding reassessment on their website, and we have put the link to it is on the splash page of ours. So if you go to www.iop.net, and our page comes up, the link to the FAQs for the county's website on reassessment is right there. And I believe that that is quite good. It's very, explains reassessment very clearly, it has answers to all the same questions that many people are going to ask over and over and over again, so I would encourage you to look at it, and I would encourage you to encourage others to look at it, because I think it will, the more people who understand this, then the better it will be. So, you know, it's not a long read, so, you know, you can kind of pick through to get your questions answered, you don't have to read it all. But I would encourage you to look at, and I would encourage you to refer other people to look at it when they approach you with questions, because they can ask more knowledgeable questions once they've read that as well.
Just because I did it, and I have no other forum to share it with, I'll share it with this one. It's one of those things, you know, you've got to bear with me. I looked at different communities, in four different communities, if they all had a property that appraised at $500,000. Obviously, an appraised property here at $500,000 is different than the property in Mount Pleasant at $500,000. Our land is more valuable than the building, in their case, the building would be more valuable, etc. But, in your case, just take it at $500,000, and you go through all of their resulting tax bills, and you do it at 4%. An Isle Poms resident at $500,000 appraised value pays the city $379.
You can't get your garbage collected for that.
Mount Pleasant, it's $617. Sullivan's Island, it's $469, and Falling Beach, it's $583. So, as a resident, relative to those communities, we get a heck of a, heck of a bargain on where we are.
What was Sullivan's?
400.
500, no, 469, excuse me. And we're at 379. Obviously, I couldn't stop there, I did it at 6 percent also. You got it in the formula, you do it. We are 601, Mount Pleasant is 1,003, and Sullivan's is 731, and Falling Beach was 907. So, the communities around here, you know, we get a heck of a deal, we leverage as much as we can, obviously, off of our tourism costs, but we're dealing with an aggregate for, again, it's a $500,000 appraised value. If you've got a million and a half dollar appraised, you're going to be paying three times. If you're a quarter of a million dollars, you pay half, but it's just a scale. So, now you all know. I can put this away and don't have to worry about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I don't have anything else. I want you to study this as much as you can. We will schedule another date to, to make a final decision. Hopefully, we'll have more information from the county and we can move forward. I'm hoping we can adjust, adjust the millage to true up the city and keep it as whole. It's not a tax increase, it's just an impact to some on the plus plus and an impact to others on the minus.
Before you adjourn, Mayor, I have one thing I know you're going to remember when I start saying it.
Oh, yeah. All right.
The, the planning commission is going to be holding a series of open house meetings in the community. Those meetings are going to start in early November. They will be off-site, that is, not at this location. They're looking at going out into the community at sites like the Exchange Club, maybe the Rec Center, maybe, maybe the Citadel Beach House. They're still trying to, to nail down the locations. But the idea is that they want people to come in and in an informal setting, either give them an idea in writing or an opinion in writing or verbally concerning the beach access parking. The whole idea is to try to get more input from the community concerning the problem and potential solutions to the problem and the work that the planning commission has been doing and to just basically get more information and more engagement by the general public out there in trying to solve the problem and do the plan. So, as we get more definite times and places, but we wanted to begin to have people watching for the fact that these meetings are going to get scheduled, anyone can go to any meeting. If the meeting down on, in the Exchange Club end of the island deals more with parking down there and you live in another area of the island and you're interested, you're certainly entitled to go to that one, you know, so that the meetings are open to whomever would like to attend. The particular locations are in an effort to try to get people from those areas to come and give their input about those areas, but they're open to anyone who would, or someone wants to attend all of them. So, help spread the word, and we'll get it posted on our website as soon as we have.
But you can pencil in three dates.
The tentative date.
Tentative date, November 9th was the first one, and November 30th, I think is the second, and the third one escapes me at the moment.
They're looking at either December 13th or 14th. I have encouraged them to think maybe not December, to, to look at something else in November if possible, just because there's so much that conflicts with things happening and people's attendance of things in December, but it may have to still be mid-December. But right now, November 9th and November 30th and December 13th or 14th not nailed down as yet. But as soon as we have it for sure, we'll make sure we start getting the word out.
Okay. Nothing else? Nothing here? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.